In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Come, Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of thy faithful, and enkindle in them the fire of thy love. Send forth thy Spirit, and they shall be created; and thou shalt renew the face of the earth. Let us pray. O God, who instructed the hearts of the faithful by the light of the Holy Spirit, grant us in that same spirit to be truly wise, and ever to rejoice in his consolation through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Jan McArthur gives me this photograph she took at the monastery at Alverno where the Stigmata took place. So it's a painting of that from the actual monastery that's there now. Okay, so let's take a look at chapter eight. We finished the three orders last time. We're going to take a look at the Mirror of Christ. And you've heard this title, Mirror, before. Like in the Litanies, the Litany of Saint Joseph and the Litany of Loretto include these titles, Mirror of Prudence or Mirror of Poverty. And that kind of sounds odd to us, but a mirror is that which shows us an image. That's the idea of the title of a mirror. This one, by the way he acted or the way he lived, shows us what it looks like to be Christ, to be an image of Christ, just like those other titles, right? Mirror of Patience, Mirror of Poverty, Mirror of Prudence, right? They're showing us what it looks like to be prudent or patient or to love poverty. So Mirror of Christ is the title that Chesterton gives to this chapter on Saint Francis, the eighth chapter in his biography of Saint Francis, in which very obviously the primary focus that he's coming to is the Stigmata, the reception of the Stigmata. I think, I hope that you've enjoyed kind of getting a chance to see a broader picture of Saint Francis than usually we have. A lot of times we have like this kind of collection of little bits in our head, right? Maybe your primary image of Saint Francis is the little garden statue, right? The kind of diminutive man who holds a dove in his hands, right? Maybe that's like your primary image of him. Or maybe it is this, this image of, of the Stigmata, right? That's a very famous one, obviously. But getting to see some of these other things about him, right? This brilliant supernatural love of poverty that he had. His ability to encourage and make enthusiastic men of hugely varied elements of the society. His kind of naive simplicity, going to the Pope to ask for approbation when he only had 12 guys around him in the first place. His leaving behind of his father, right? All these different elements. And Chesterton is trying to make the point that all of this is, it's one man, right? These aren't just individual stories that all happened to be about Saint Francis. It's Saint Francis who is living in each of the stories. They're all characteristic of this man. So I hope that that's been something that you appreciate. It's something that I really appreciated when I first read this book. I lived in Italy for four years, and they love Saint Francis there, more even than we do here, right? There is a, there's an image of Saint Francis in most churches in Italy. Eight hundred years later, there's an image of Saint Francis in most churches in Italy, at least in my estimation. And I kind of treated him like, ah, well, you know, I'm not really interested in him because he's, he's kind of passe. He's, you know, he's, everyone likes him, so there must, there must not be much to him, right? If everyone can like him, then he can't have anything that really distinguishes him, right? He just, you know, he's kind of bland, you know, unoffensive, right? I wasn't interested in that. And then you read this book and you're like, oh, man, I was, I was, I was living in the land of Francis for four years and I didn't discover him, right? Until I came home and read about him in English by an Englishman. Yeah, a missed opportunity. But I've made up a little bit for lost time. Yeah, it's, it's Francis. It's the, it's a figure, it's a subject, right? And he was a real man, and therefore what happened in him was real and connected and logical, and it makes sense. It all goes together. Just like your life, all the little details of your life go together. When you tell your children or your grandchildren or, you know, anyone who would want to get to know you and you show them a picture, or if you're trying to tell, maybe this is the more obvious example in our minds, when you're trying to tell them about someone that you loved and knew and who they, this person that you're talking to didn't know, when you're trying to tell them, you tell them a bunch of different stories and you might show them pictures. And to someone who doesn't know who this is, it would be very easy to just kind of keep them all dissociated. And, you know, my grandpa, I knew him as, you know, a baldish man with big glasses who sat and watched the news most of the day. And Grandma remembers him as this great athlete, right? He was a track athlete when he was young. I wouldn't have known that, but she's telling me about this. And so she pulls out a photograph of him in his army uniform from 1950, right? And shows me what he was like when they got married. Oh, now this is, this is different, right? Now I can see the track athlete. She tells me about him, you know, reading the Bible as a young man, a little Catholic boy from Kansas, and he read the Bible on his own. He just, you know, and I didn't know that because I didn't see him reading the Bible in his little chair, right? Yeah, so she tells me all these things about him. How he, Dad tells me about how he would start telling jokes but couldn't even get to the end because he would laugh at his own punchlines before he got there. Yeah, yeah. He still had a German accent. He grew up speaking German, right? So he couldn't pronounce Wentzville. They'd drive past Wentzville on the highway and he couldn't pronounce it because he still had his German accent still peeking through, yeah. Yeah, so all of these little things, and they're all, those are completely different. I mean, those could belong, each of them to a different man. Each of those little elements could belong to a different man. But they do belong to one man. And so they, they give us all this combined picture of who the subject really was. That's what I think Chesterton's attempting here, trying to, to give us an opportunity who know disparate parts of the story of Saint Francis to show us who the man was that made them all fit together. And this man, he's proposing in this eighth chapter, is the Mirror of Christ. Why is Saint Francis so intriguing to us as Christians? Because he shows us what Christ looked like. And that's where Chesterton begins this chapter, right? If the various things that Francis said seem so crazy to us, sorry, if the various things that Saint Francis said seem so kind of picturesque and attractive to us, even if we're not going to follow them directly and explicitly, right? Then they, then they can serve as a way to understand the similarly picturesque phrases of Christ, which since they're so much farther removed from us, both in time and in cultural context, can seem very foreign, right? When Christ says, "If a man slaps you on one cheek, turn the other to him as well," Chesterton makes the point in here, it's hard for us to know whether that was like a phrase or a saying in ancient, you know, in, in first century Palestine? Or is that unique to him? It seems to have been unique, at least in its presentation. But here's another example, the parable of the, of the prodigal son. I have heard, I can't, I don't have a way to corroborate this, but I've heard that there was a common folk story, you know, a moralistic story among the Jews of that time that began, a man had two sons. So Jesus picks that up, and the story goes that the younger son dishonors his father in this way. And so Jesus is telling the story, and you can imagine, you know, just telling the story like anyone would tell it, maybe with slightly different details. Maybe that's what every Jewish storyteller did, he differentiated the details. And at the end of the story, the way that it usually went, as I understand it, is that the younger son does come back and he gets punished. And so Jesus tells the story, and everyone is expecting, they know the answer, and he says, "And the father ran to greet his son, and clothed him, and made of him," right? And that is so boggling to the mind of first century Judaism that, that it made its point. But it did rely on the fact that that story already existed in its popular form before Jesus told it. And it's hard for us to know with any given phrase of Jesus, was he playing? Was he making a pun? Was he referring to something that was already just kind of a general cultural consciousness? Was he making a new, I mean, certainly it was all new, but was it, was it a radically new, like no one's ever heard anything like this before? Or was it something that was relevant to them and was striking to them because it was different than they were expecting? We don't know. It's hard for us to know because it's just so far removed from us. But Francis is closer, closer both in time, and therefore there's less time for the details to have gotten lost, and also closer in cultural circumstance. He's a Western European man. We're no longer medieval, but we do kind of understand the Western European man in a way that we don't kind of intuitively understand the ancient Semitic man. And so, but, but Chesterton's point is that, okay, so if we find it may be hard to understand Christ at face value, which I think we do, we want to understand and we're sympathetic to him, but we can find the Gospel itself a little bit, it kind of stiff-arms us a little bit, then maybe read Francis and apply it as a hermeneutic, as a principle of interpretation to Christ, right? So if we hear Christ, right, as he says, where is it? Well, I'm in the middle of 285. Yet it is true of almost any of them that if we take, if we simply translate them into the Umbrian dialect of the first Franciscans, he's talking about these phrases of Christ. If we simply translate them into the dialect of the first Franciscans, they would seem like any other part of the Franciscan story. Doubtless, in one sense, fantastic, but quite familiar. "All sorts of critical controversies have revolved around the passage which bids men consider the lilies of the field and copy them in taking no thought for the morrow." The skeptic has alternated between telling us to be true Christians and do it, and explaining that it's impossible to do. "When he is a communist as well as an atheist, he is generally doubtful whether to blame us for preaching what is impracticable or for not instantly putting it into practice." I am not going to discuss here the point of ethics and the economics. I merely remark that even those who are puzzled at the saying of Christ would hardly pause in accepting it as a saying of Saint Francis. Nobody would be surprised to find that he had said, "I beseech you, little brothers, that you be as wise as Brother Daisy and Brother Dandelion; for never do they lie awake thinking of tomorrow, yet they have gold crowns like kings and emperors or like Charlemagne in all his glory." Just translate it into the context of Saint Francis, and suddenly these phrases of Christ make sense. "Even more bitterness and bewilderment has arisen about the command to turn the other cheek and to give the coat to the robber who has taken the cloak. It's widely held to imply the wickedness of war among nations, about which in itself not a word seems to have been said. Taken thus literally and universally, it much more clearly implies the wickedness of all law and government." So he's making fun of this kind of standard interpretation of 1900 England, right? That would kind of say, oh, well, you know, Christ was a pacifist. No, if you think that that phrase from Christ means that he was a pacifist, it actually means he's an anarchist, right? So the, the kind of good, prim, proper English society of 1900 might, you know, start working against war, but they would, they would abhor this anarchism that was ravaging England society at that point. And he's saying, no, 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 if you think that that phrase means, can be applied in that way, then it can absolutely be applied to abolish, abolish all government, right? Government is a form of enforcing social order and norms and by the appropriate use of violence, right? That's what a police force is. It's a means violently to oppress those who are disrupting the social order, right? I don't have that authority, but the police do, and that's because they come from the government. And if Christ is saying that when someone offends you, turn the other cheek, then what he's, if you think that that means apply it to the, to, you know, war and armies, then it absolutely should be applied to police forces and government. So Chesterton is making fun of these simple Englishmen, straightforward Englishmen who think that they're being so refined, and he's like, no, 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 this, that makes no sense. What it does mean, right, is that Christ was instructing a band of eager enthusiastic followers. That's what he was doing, which is exactly what Francis was doing. He wasn't necessarily giving all men everywhere a rule for life when he says things like, "Leave everything and follow me," right? Some men do that. Not all men do that in order to be Christians. What all men must do to be Christians is to follow him in spirit and in truth, right? Christ didn't abolish the world, he fulfilled the world, right? But if you take him too literally in some places, then, then you will misunderstand him. And that's why Saint Francis's practical interpretation of the words of Christ makes, Christ makes sense to us. He's talking to a bunch of men who have voluntarily left their homes and their possessions behind to follow this remarkable way. But Francis also didn't require every man to do that in order to be a good man. So why not apply that saying, those sayings to Christ as well? He's giving us an example, but not necessarily a strict rule in many of these cases. And none of this, obviously, to diminish what Christ says or to say, oh, we don't have to obey him. No, we do have to obey him, but we have to understand him correctly in order to obey There are many prosperous peacemakers who are much more shocked at the idea of using the brute force of soldiers against a powerful foreigner than they are using the brute force of policemen against a poor fellow citizen. Here again, I am content to point out that the paradox becomes perfectly human and probable if addressed by Francis to Franciscans. Nobody would be surprised to read that Brother Juniper did then run after the thief that had stolen his hood, beseeching him to take his gown also, for so Francis had commanded him. Nobody would be surprised if Saint Francis told a young noble about to be admitted to his company that so far from pursuing a brigand to recover his shoes, he ought to pursue him to make him a present of his stockings. We may not, we may like or not the atmosphere these things imply, but we know what atmosphere they do imply. We recognize a certain note as natural and clear as the note of a bird, the note of Saint Francis. There is in it something of gentle mockery of the very idea of possessions, something of a hope of disarming the enemy by generosity, something of a humorous sense of bewildering the worldly with the unexpected, something of the joy of carrying an enthusiastic conviction to a logical extreme. But anyhow, we have no difficulty in recognizing it if we have read any of the literature of the Little Brothers of the Movement that began in Assisi. It seems reasonable to infer that if it was this spirit that made such strange things possible in Umbria, it was the same spirit that made them possible in Palestine. If we hear the same unmistakable note and sense the same indescribable savor in two things at such a distance from each other, it seems natural to suppose that the case that is far, is more remote from our experience was like the case that is closer in our experience. As the thing is explicable on the assumption that Francis was speaking to Franciscans, it is not an irrational explanation to suggest that Christ was also speaking to some dedicated band that had much the same function as Franciscans. In other words, it seems only natural to hold, as the Catholic Church has held, that these councils of perfection were part of a particular vocation to astonish and awaken the world. But in any case, it is important to note that when we do find these particular features with their seemingly fantastic fitness reappearing after more than a thousand years, we find them produced by the same religious system which claims continuity and authority from the scenes in which they first appeared. Any number of philosophies will repeat the platitudes of Christianity, but it is the ancient church that can again startle the world with the paradoxes of Christianity. "Ubipetus ibi franciscus." He's finishing there. "Ubipetus ibi ecclesia" was a phrase of the ancient Christians, right? Where you find Peter, there you will find the church, right? Where there's Peter, there's the church. And he changes it, right? Where there's Peter, there's Francis, right? In other words, you don't get Francis, who's so attractive to us, even to his audience who are not Catholics, even to his audience who aren't Christians. There's something attractive in Saint Francis, and he's using that to his advantage. He says, okay, you're attracted by this Francis. Good, you should be. There's something good about him, remarkably good about him. But now, now that you've been attracted by him, note, where do you find him? You don't find him outside of the Catholic Church. You find him in the Catholic Church because the thing that produced Francis is the thing that produced the Catholic Church, which is Christ. The spirit of Christ lives in Francis because, because the spirit of Christ lives in the Catholic Church, and it does not live outside. He's making a very strong rhetorical point here. This is, this is a rebuttal of all those in 1900 England who rejected explicitly the Catholic Church, and still do today, of course. He's saying, look, if you're attracted by Francis, and if especially, as we've started to point out, you're attracted by Francis because you find in him an image of Christ, good. Now I want to make the further point that you should be similarly attracted to the Catholic Church as you're attracted to Francis, because you're attracted to Christ, because it's the same spirit that is there. Yes, he has another phrase as he sets up that section on 284 that maybe summarizes it. "What I mean is this: that if men find certain riddles and hard sayings in the story of Galilee, and if they find the answers to those riddles in the story of Assisi, it really does show that a secret has been handed down in one religious tradition and no other. It shows that the casket that was locked in Palestine can be unlocked in Umbria, for the church is the keeper of the keys." That's marvelous. The keeper of the keys, right? Peter holding the keys that Christ gave him. The church is the keeper of the keys. If you find it difficult ever to understand the Christ in the Gospel, then find him in the church. Okay, let's continue this. He goes on, right? The next image he, he brings up is that Francis, this stage of his life seems to be a quest for Golgotha, right? He is, he's seeking to go up the mountain, right? And if we've found, you know, his advice and his counsel and his teaching to his brethren as he's setting up this life for the Franciscans that is very clearly patterned on the Sermon on the Mount, right? That's where these phrases like, "Give no thought for tomorrow" come from. Now it seems that he's also seeking not just the, the mount of the Sermon on the Mount, but now he's seeking Golgotha, right? He's seeking to die with Christ, not just to live like Christ lived, but to die as he died. And I love the phrase that he gives when he's explaining why he didn't get killed when he went to talk to the Sultan, right? How did that happen? Because Francis, from the stories, very clearly proclaimed the Gospel to him. You need Jesus Christ. Your prophet Mohammed is no prophet. He is not a messenger of God. He does not tell you the truth, right? And we've seen in our own day what happens when you insult the prophet Mohammed. Now go back 800 years into the court of the Sultan, who is currently at war with Christians who are besieging Damietta, right? Francis goes and tells him that your religion is a false religion, you're following something that's false, you need Jesus. I'm here to bring him to you. And he doesn't die. He walks away from that encounter. How is that possible? And he says that Francis, men seem to have loved Francis too much to let him be killed, even people who should be his enemies, right? He calls this, I love the, I love the phrase, where is it now? The, the story of the man who could not be killed, right? He puts it all in caps, you know, he capitalizes all the, all the first words. The tale of Saint Francis might be told as a sort of ironic tragedy and comedy called "The Man Who Could Not Get Killed." He just keeps throwing himself into these things and can't get killed, right? He cannot become a martyr, he cannot be crucified like Christ. And, and he says that, he calls it a tragedy because Francis wanted to be like Christ, but it's a tragedy even in some of its details, right? Because neither was he successful in converting the Sultan, right? He goes to him and doesn't become a martyr, which might be because he won over the king, right? Think of, think of the great Christian missionaries who converted the, you know, the pagan kings of Europe, right? Augustine of Canterbury or Saint Remy converting Clovis in France. They didn't get martyred. Why? Because the king that they went to became a Christian. Oh, great, so Francis didn't get martyred. That means the Arabs must be Christians now, right? No, not that either. It was a failure, and he certainly felt it as a failure, which maybe we miss a little bit because we think of Saint Francis as being so successful. He, he really did live like Christ. And did he regard his life somewhat as a failure? Perhaps he did. Certainly certain episodes in his life seemed to have been failures to him. The man who could not get killed is a tragedy in some ways because if at least he had become a martyr, then, you know, those failures in worldly sense would have been obviously worthwhile in a Christian sense. But he didn't even get martyred. So what was the point? You could, you could imagine a man like Saint Francis thinking that as he's on his way home. So he comes home finally, right? And he, sorry, we, we skipped over the, the episode of the great, the meeting of the straw huts, right? He had tried to go once, he, he got rebuffed, he got sent back to Italy, and that's when they have this huge event basically in a field outside of a town, and that's where he met Saint Dominic. As far as we know, it's the only time he met, that the two of them met, and he points out that Dominic probably was appalled at the lack of organization of this thing, right? And he, he mentioned that, you know, the Spaniard had the mind of a military organizer, right? We think of Spain as this thoroughly Catholic land, right? But in 1200 AD, the Reconquista has not happened yet and won't happen finally for another 300 years. 1492 is the finishing of the Reconquista. Most of Spain is held by the Moors. It's held by Muslims who persecute Christians, right? And the first Franciscan martyrs, the proto-martyrs of the Franciscan order get martyred not in Arabia, not in Egypt, but in Spain. That's where there are missionaries. That's kind of crazy for us to think about. We think of medieval Europe, right? Oh, you know, this, it's just, it's just Christianity as far as the eye can see. Not quite, not quite. The missionaries are still active currently in, in 1200, in the time of Saint Francis. The missionaries are currently active in what is today Poland and Spain and Norway. Christian Europe was on, was an ongoing development at this time, right? So, you know, we think of, oh, you know, Christian Europe had kind of fallen into decay. It had, right? But it hadn't even reached to the breadth of its, you know, what we kind of associate as extent. The Gospel is constantly throughout history being proposed, and the lands of the Gospel are being extended. That can be easy, I didn't know that. I taught a church history course this year, and so I had to go read a church history book in order to teach it to high schoolers. And I was, I was amazed to find that that was true, that, that the, you know, like the Lithuanian mission was almost simultaneous with Martin Luther in 1517. Lithuania was still a pagan land at the time of, or I should say the Baltic, right? Farther north than Lithuania, right? Latvia, what we would call Latvia today, was pagan at the time that the Protestant Reformation is happening. We, we think that the whole of Christendom became Christian, and then after a period of stability, these things happen. No, the whole thing, the whole history is this kind of boggling turmoil and tumult and a cauldron of, that's being stirred all the time, right? Spain is under the Military Reconquista, right? And Dominic comes from northern Spain. He comes from Barcelona. He's very much aware of kind of the military necessity of this, which is maybe why his Dominicans become caught up in a military campaign against the Albigencis in southern France. And Francis doesn't because he's born in Italy. Italy is at war, but little wars between little towns, right? Not kind of social war against the enemies from without. Italy isn't in that kind of situation. So anyway, Dominic is appalled at the lack of organization here. And, but Francis basically says, ah, it'll be fine. And it is, and it is fine. He says, it's a miracle, and we should regard it as a miracle that all this food just kind of showed up from the town from nowhere seemingly, and that noblemen served as footmen to, to serve this, this kind of wild gathering of, of the poor brothers of Saint Francis. It is a miracle. It is a miracle that that happened. And he points out because the English, who are maybe a little, you know, the English of Chesterton's day, who are attracted to Francis but, but, you know, recoil against Saint Dominic, right? The Inquisition and, and, you know, stern, dark Catholic doctrine, right? He says, no, no, they were, the same, the same spirit animated them, right? Different circumstances made them different, looked different, right? But Francis probably wouldn't have said, no, no, we should never use arms to defend the Gospel. If we're being attacked, then yeah, using military force might be exactly what's necessary. But Dominic certainly would not have said, you know, have rejected the idea that persuading people is better than using military might. That's what his Dominicans were founded to do, was to preach the Gospel. So to think of them as, as, you know, kind of wildly different or opposed to each other in some ways is not to understand them, is the point he's making there. Okay, so then Francis leaves, goes off to Arabia, comes back as he thinks of himself a failure, right, in multiple ways. And when he comes back, he is greeted with this, while he's been gone, this continuing success of the Franciscan spirit, right? It's so successful now that they've built a house in Bologna. And everyone is celebrating, and one man shouts anathema, and it's Francis. You know, this house that represents in some ways the kind of full flowering of this Franciscan energy, right? You now are established in the world. And he says, no, that's exactly what we should not do. He, and as Chesterton points out, it's the only time, the only incident we have of the entire episode of Francis's life where we see him get angry at his, at his own followers. He did not, incidentally, convince them to never have buildings. Within his own lifetime and certainly in the generation afterward, the Franciscans do settle down and found friaries throughout Italy and throughout the rest of Western Europe. They become, when the Crusaders, you know, at this point, there are Crusader kingdoms in Jerusalem and in the Middle East, the Franciscans become the custodians of all of those shrines. So they are settled down. They're established in the world. Francis's rebuttal is not heated, for good or for ill, right? Someone asked last week, do the Franciscans today still live this, you know, remarkable asceticism? No, I would say. I mean, patently, they do not. If you've ever seen a fat Franciscan, then you could probably say they probably don't, right? So, but is that, but is that a bad thing, right? And actually, when we get into chapter nine, we'll see that maybe Francis himself was unique. And the spirit of Francis, which kindled this movement, which still continues today, which is always, as everything is, everything that is good in this world is always going to need reform to get it back to its original vigor, right? To trim the dead branches off and let the plant grow again like it's supposed to be doing. It's always going to need that, right? Maybe Francis was unique. And when he died, maybe that was the end of that particular energy in the world. And maybe it's not wrong for the Franciscans to have houses and to have provision for tomorrow, even if the first ones didn't. Maybe that was just what was necessary for the thing that Francis started to keep going once he was gone. It's an argument that was had, right? And throughout the 1200s and into the 1300s, there were strong arguments, right? There was a whole faction of Franciscans who said, what we're doing is wrong. Francis himself told us it was wrong when he was here. And they were these radical Franciscans who eventually had to be reprimanded by the Pope because they were just saying that all, they eventually got to the point of saying that all ecclesial authority, which approves of this settling of the Franciscan thing, is obviously corrupt and should not be listened to. And they were becoming wild apocalyptic preachers who were leading people into crazy, right? It was, they themselves were a corruption of the Franciscan thing. Supposedly, in their minds, surely, in defense of the original spirit of Saint Francis. But Francis didn't make people insane. He made them sane. That's part of the point that Chesterton's trying to make in this book. So it's tough. It's tough to discern that. And we see in the providence that God works down through history, where His work really is taking place, right? Where is God's grace? Well, we see it in the aftermath. We see it in the aftereffect. And the Franciscan thing, surely, is, even as it is settled after his death, is a work of God. It wouldn't still be here if it weren't. Okay, so now we turn to the end of chapter eight. So Francis is disappointed in his attempt to be martyred. He's disappointed in the direction that his own band of brothers is going. And it's at this point that he's given this mountain, right? I love that line, right? A picturesque gift, right? Unique among the gifts of this world. He was given a mountain, right? And he's not allowed, in his mind, to have a house. But he is allowed to have a mountain. He's allowed to be given a mountain. And it's part of the picturesqueness of Saint Francis, that the man who wouldn't allow himself to live in a building, or at least not anything more than a hut, right? Allows himself to be given a mountain. And he goes to this mountain to pray. And especially when he, as Chesterton points out, when he wanted to undertake those even more serious and difficult exercises of austerity that he didn't even recommend to his followers. They're so severe that I can't even recommend them to other people. God has given me the particular impetus to do them, so He will give me the strength to endure them. And I cannot presume that He has given that to anyone else. So I'm not going to require or even suggest them to other men, right? This will be repeated, actually, in the life of Saint Ignatius. I don't know if you know the story of the conversion of Saint Ignatius, military man in a lot of ways like Saint Francis, who was wounded at the Battle of Pamplona, brought back by his enemies who had won the battle to his own castle because they recognized his great bravery. So they personally transported him to his castle at Loyola, where he recovered. He was so vain that he had his bone reset even after it had set basically correctly because there was, his leg was lumpy, and he was ugly, right? They wore tights in the court at that time. He had a lump on the side of his leg, so he had them saw off the lump because he was lumpy, right? That's the worldliness of Ignatius, who then, as he's recovering, is so bored that he's willing even to read the Lives of the Saints, right? That's the only book they've got around. So he reads the Lives of the Saints. He's so bored, right? And eventually, he finds himself starting to imagine himself like one of these saints. He starts thinking to himself, you know, he's reading the life of Dominic and Francis, and he thinks, I could do that. Maybe I could do that. Yeah, you know, I could do that. Actually, I could do that better than they did. And I imagine God saying, ah, I can work with that. So Ignatius recovers and goes off to a cave, right? Monresa. He goes off to a cave in order to pray and fast like Saint Paul did, like Saint Benedict did, like Saint Francis did, right? He's going to be like them. And he almost starved himself to death. And afterward, when he had founded his Jesuits, right? Half a generation later, he forbade them to do what he had done. He said, I almost killed myself, and that was not what God was asking of me. I was mistaken in my ardor, right? Now, maybe practically speaking, it was what was necessary to get me to where I am today. I mean, I am who I am because of what I have been. But you should not imitate that in me, right? So Francis is doing these things that he doesn't even require or expect his brothers to imitate. And he's off on this mountain when this mysterious incident happens, right? Let's just read this. Chesterton's description is marvelous. I'm picking up at the top of 295, right? So this nobleman gave Francis a mountain, a thing somewhat unique among the gifts of the world. Presumably, the Franciscan rule, which forbade a man to accept money, had made no detailed provision about accepting mountains. Nor indeed did Saint Francis accept it, save as he accepted everything as a temporary convenience rather than a personal possession. But he turned it into a sort of refuge for the Aramitecal rather than the monastic life. He retired there when he wished for a life of prayer and fasting, which he did not ask even his closest friends to follow. This was Alverno of the Apennines. And upon its peak, there rests forever a dark cloud that has the rim or halo of glory. What it was exactly that happened there may never be known. The matter has been, I believe, a subject of dispute among the most devout students of the saintly life, as well as between such students and others of the more secular sort. It may be that Saint Francis never spoke to a soul on the subject. It would be highly characteristic. And it is certain in any case that he said very little. I think he is only alleged to have spoken of it to one man. Subject, however, to such truly sacred doubts, I will confess that, to me personally, this one solitary and indirect report that has come down to us reads very like the report of something real, of some of those things that are more real than what we call daily realities. Even something, as it were, double and bewildering about the image seems to carry the impression of an experience shaking the senses, as does the passage in Revelations about the supernatural creatures full of eyes. It would seem that Saint Francis beheld the heavens above him occupied by a vast winged being like a seraph spread out like a cross. There seems some mystery about whether the winged figure was itself crucified, as in the posture of crucifixion, or whether it merely enclosed in its frame of wings some colossal crucifix. But it seems clear that there was some question of the former impression. For Saint Bonaventura distinctly says that Saint Francis doubted how a seraph could be crucified, since those awful and ancient principalities were without the infirmity of the passion. Saint Bonaventura suggests that the seeming contradiction may have meant that Saint Francis was to be crucified as a spirit, since he could not be crucified as a man. But whatever the meaning of the vision, the general idea of it is very vivid and overwhelming. Saint Francis saw above him, filling the whole heavens, some vast, immemorial, unthinkable power, ancient like the ancient of days, whose calm men had conceived under the forms of winged bulls or monstrous cherubim. And all that winged wonder was in pain like a wounded bird. This seraphic suffering, it is said, pierced his soul with a sort of grief and pity. It may be inferred that some sort of mounting agony accompanied the ecstasy. Finally, after some fashion, the apocalypse faded from the sky and the agony within subsided. And silence and the natural air filled the morning twilight and settled slowly in the purple chasms and cleft abysses of the Apennines. The head of the solitary sank amid all that relaxation and quiet in which time can drift by with the sense of something ended and complete. And as he stared downwards, he saw the marks of nails in his own hands. It's amazing that Chesterton, who starts this whole account by saying, we don't know anything that happened there, and probably we will never know, and then gives us such a vivid account of what happened. How does he do that? And he does it in such a way that he's not, he's not suggesting to us anything that's false. He's not, this isn't a fiction. He's not making things up. But he takes the tiny little bit that we do actually know and turns it into a story. I don't know how he does that. I don't know how he does it.
Father, when he, when Chesterton says to his knowledge, Saint Francis only spoke about this to one man, is he referring to Saint Bonaventure?
No, it seems not. I forget who it was that he told this to. But Bonaventure is reporting what this man told him. And Bonaventure says, if I remember correctly, that Francis didn't tell anybody else, right? He didn't tell me. He didn't tell any of us who were with him, except this one man.
Something that's true, though. You wonder how he got away with that. I mean, the stigmata stayed with him for the rest of his life.
Yeah, yeah. He was famous, he was famous in his own lifetime for the stigmata.
Everyone's going to be asking him, how did this happen? How did you get this?
Right. I think of it like, like Saint Paul, who says, you know, I know a man, speaking of himself, who has been carried up to the third heaven and has heard words that cannot be repeated, right? He just was, or like Saint Thomas, when he was asked, why aren't you writing anymore? When he paused in his writing of the Summa, and he says, after what I have seen, everything I have written seems like so much straw, right? This mystical experience that was as close as a man can be to heaven until he's there puts to silence any attempt to describe it. I think that's what's happening there. He was literally speechless about it. There's a great passage. I think it is in Orthodoxy. I hope it is. Because I'd like to read Orthodoxy with you later. And it's one of the reasons I picked Saint Francis, because this is an easier introduction to G.K. Chesterton. But I'd like to read Orthodoxy with you eventually. I think it's in Orthodoxy. It may be in one of Chesterton's other books, where he talks about the one thing Christ hid from men, right? He brought men into his confidence, right? These apostles who saw even the Transfiguration, right? And he says that there's one thing he didn't show them when he went up on the mountains to pray, right? He went off alone to pray sometimes. What, you know, there are times he goes up on the mountain and brings his disciples with him, but there are times he goes off alone. What did he do then? And Chesterton says, there's one thing that man could not bear to see on the face of God, and it is laughter. It's amazing to consider that. And of course, he's just suggesting that, right? He doesn't know what Christ did on the mountain when he was alone. Yeah, real, full, the happiness of God, which, to see which is to leave this world, right? That's why in the Old Testament, whenever they see God or a messenger of God, they think they're going to die. Because to see the happiness of God is to be taken out of this world. And so Christ, until He established the Kingdom of Heaven on the cross, until that happened, He had to hide that from men, is what Chesterton is suggesting. And these deep mystical experiences cannot be conveyed, even by description, to other men, by the men who have experienced them. The book is wrapping up. I think that chapter eight is kind of the climax. Chapter nine and 10 are good. I hope that you enjoyed chapter nine. And we're going to start chapter nine. We're not going to finish today. But we'll finish next week with the end of nine and the end of 10. But they seem to me, they strike me as Chesterton kind of wrapping things up. That last little paragraph seems to me his, like the point of his story, right? Is the stigmata, which makes sense. That was, and he even says, as he goes into chapter nine, he says, you know, the stigmata is the end of Francis's life, even if it wasn't the temporal end, right? It was the point of Francis's life. And after that, it seems like he was almost a shadow, right? Everything that happened after that seems to have been just kind of like the drifting away of a shadow. He says, there are some biographers who place the stigmata event earlier, relatively early in Francis's life. But the more reliable reports seem to indicate that it was close to the end, maybe a year or two before he died. But in any case, he seems to have been fading out at that point. That seems to be when his eyes started to go. Anyway, but he says, now, if you, you know, gentle reader, if you think that, if you've got all these collection of miracle stories from Saint Francis, right? And he doesn't actually list any of them if you read chapter nine, you're like, okay, so we got this chapter on miracles, right? And we're going to hear all the miracle stories. Nope, we don't. He kind of summarizes them. He's like, there are some miracles that are like, you know, the miraculous healings. There are some miracles that are the ability to read souls. There are these, you know, various categories of miracles. But he doesn't actually tell us any of the stories. He kind of figures that you know them already. Like, if you're reading this book, you probably have heard these stories about Saint Francis, right? So you probably, you probably know them, right? I encourage you, they still, I think they still publish, little books called "The Flowers of Saint Francis." Or you could go read the biography written by Saint Bonaventure, which does actually include a lot more of those stories, if you're interested in those. But Chesterton kind of says, the point I'm trying to make here is that miracles to a modern Englishman are often dismissed out of hand and almost without thinking about it. Most Englishmen don't believe in miracles, and they don't realize almost that they don't believe in miracles. It's not like they have chosen not to believe in miracles. It's just that when they hear a miracle story, they dismiss it as, oh, that didn't happen, right? And that comes from Enlightenment skepticism of the late 1600s into the 1700s, right? There's this idea of the rationalists and the secularists who become atheists that miracles not only don't happen, they can't happen, right? David Hume, philosopher, Scottish philosopher of the 1700s, whose philosophy basically founds the modern world in its philosophical foundation. His argument that miracles don't happen goes like this. Natural things proceed according to natural law. Well, that's true, right? I mean, I am what I am and I do what I do because I am a man, right? I have a nature that gives me a law of action. And I couldn't do anything. Like, I can't do things that are beyond my nature or outside my nature. I can't fly, right, like a bird. I can't climb a tree like a squirrel can because I'm not a bird or a squirrel, right? Okay, so natural things behave according to their natures. But a miracle is by definition supernatural, outside of nature. You know, it doesn't act according to the law of nature. That's how we would recognize it as a miracle. But since all things behave according to their natures, therefore miracles don't ever happen. Okay. Basically, he's taking as a hidden premise that there is no God who acts according to His nature to produce the miracles. He's just taking it as a granted. He doesn't even work it into his argument. He just says, obviously, everything acts according to its nature. Therefore, there are no miracles, right? And in a certain sense, it kind of makes sense at first because you're like, okay, so if someone told me that, you know, if, you know, I wandered up down the street to, because I had heard a big bang and there was an accident up there, right? And the person involved in the accident told me that the car that they ran into literally fell out of the sky in front of them. We'd be like, that didn't happen. I don't know what happened, but that didn't happen. I don't know what happened, but that didn't happen." Right? Right? So we have this kind of ordinary, we have an ordinary proposal to look for natural explanations of things. And so does the Catholic Church, which is why, whenever a miracle, for example, for the causes of saints, is proposed, we investigate it, and we always look for natural explanations first. You don't go looking for supernatural explanations, because then you would find them, and you wouldn't be able to prove that the things were actually supernatural. Right? So we look for natural explanations. And when we run out of those, then we say, "Well, but it did happen." So this is the point, this is the problem that David Hume makes, that the mistake he makes. He says, "Therefore, they don't happen." We say, "But they did!" Right? Francis really had holes in his hands. Right? These healings really happened. These crutches were left at Lourdes. People saw crippled people get up and walk. They really did happen. They can't be explained by nature, that's true. Therefore, there must be a supernatural explanation. If nature can't explain them, and they happened, then there has to be an explanation beyond nature. David Hume just says, "Well, they didn't happen," and we're like, "But they did!" So, but many people operate, at least implicitly, on a philosophical foundation of David Hume. They basically just say, "Miracles don't happen." And they may say that because, they would say to themselves, "Because I've never seen one." Which is why, incidentally, we're gonna go to Gower in about three months' time. We're gonna go see a miracle, at least an apparent miracle. It's not been authenticated by the Church, but it seems to be the kind of thing that has, in the past, been authenticated by the Church. Right? I have gone to Cassia, where Saint Rita is, who is still incorrupt today, 600 years after she died. So miracles do happen. And if you, and this is why I think we Catholics should be proposing miracles. Like, "Okay, you say you don't believe in them, go see it." I've seen personally three Eucharistic miracles in my own, with my own eyes. I've gone to see where they are. I don't know what explanation the world offers for that, but I don't think it has one. I think it just ignores the reality. I think it ignores the evidence. And that's what Chesterton is arguing in this paragraph, or in this chapter. He says, "Look, there are people who don't believe in the miracles." Fine. Right? They're operating on the basis of a forgone philosophical conviction. That's the same modus operandi of the Christians, who do believe in them. Right? "We believe in God, and therefore we believe in the activity of God." You don't, you believe, not only do you not believe in God, you believe that there is no God, and therefore you don't believe in His activity. Both of those, both of the conclusions are equally rational. If you start from this premise, you will get to this conclusion. Right? If you start from the premise that there is no God, you will get to the conclusion that there are no activities of God. If you start, but, but, he's saying, "But, therefore, if you start from the premise that there is a God, you will get to the conclusion that there are miracles." The Christians are not irrational for believing in miracles, is what he's saying. They just start from a different premise. What you can't do, though skeptic, is say, "I am skeptical about everything, and therefore I start from the premise of whatever." He's saying, "No, no, if you're skeptical about everything, you have to start from no premises at all." You can't start from a premise because you have to put in doubt the premise. That's what a skeptic is. Right? He's saying that skepticism, in the end, is a dead-end philosophy. It gets you nothing, literally. Right? Not only does it not get you anything, it gets you nothingness. Which is why, after the skepticism of the late 1700s, the kind of thoroughgoing skepticism of the late 1700s, the 1800s becomes an age of nihilism. You get Nietzsche, who just says, basically Rage Against the Machine. Right? Just be, right, because there is nothing. Right? So don't submit yourself to any law, don't, you know, any of these things, right? There's just nothingness. There's no meaning. Right? It's a philosophy of nothing, and it comes from this philosophy of skepticism. So Chesterton is saying to his not very thoroughgoing skeptical readers of 1900s England, "Look, skepticism is a dead end. You don't want to go that way, and the miracles can help you." So let's look at the miracles. And he's giving, it's very fascinating. Chesterton, I think, finds a kindred spirit in Saint Francis, because he is sympathetic to his reader. Right? He's like, "I'm one of you, so let me tell you about what I have found." So in order to displace the skepticism, the kind of latent skepticism of his reader, he doesn't try to prove Christianity. He just says, "Look, you know, in our day, you know, miracles are proposed and are accepted pretty commonly." Like, people go to fortune tellers, people go to palm readers. Right? That was becoming very fashionable in England of the 1920s. Right? The séances, right? That was early 1900s stuff. Right? "You all believe in that? Why not believe, why not believe in the monastic, right, the monastic miracles? Right? If we're gonna believe in modern miracles of technology, like medicine and electricity, right? If you're gonna say that, oh, that healing couldn't have happened, well, yeah, and neither could this healing have happened, but now we've got a doctor who can do it." Right? So a thing that was impossible 10 years ago is now possible. That's what he says in this, at the end of the paragraph on 298. He says, "A man in Voltaire's time, 1700s France, did not know what miracle he would have, he would next have to throw up." Right? Some miracle that he's gonna have to disclaim, right? Some miracle story from superstitious Catholic, you know, medieval past. He's gonna have to throw all those away. "Oh, I found another one. I gotta get rid of that one now." "A man in our time does not know what miracle he will next have to swallow." You know, you read the newspapers, and you're reading miracle stories, is what he's saying, when we have the invention of electricity, or of the steam engine, or of, you know, whatever. Right? Now, he says, he's very careful to say, "Now, those aren't miracles in the way that those medieval miracles were miracles, but they are miracles in the sense that they were impossible, and now they're not." So if the man who didn't know about these things is now having them explained to him in the newspaper, why not allow the man to have those medieval miracles explained to him in a hagiography? When the biographer of Saint Francis tells us about this miracle or that miracle, why don't we just read it like a newspaper account? Why do we say, "Oh, when they get to the account of the stigmata, now they're being absurd"? What? So you were willing to accept all the other stuff about Saint Francis up to the stigmata. So is the man reliable or not? Right? Is the one who's giving the account a reliable source or not? If he's not reliable, as demonstrated by the fact that he tells about the stigmata as if it happened, then he's not reliable about any of the other stuff. Right? That's his point about the images of the man who flew a blue balloon up to the moon and found it was made of green cheese, right? He said, "If we would say, 'I'm not taking an oath that the moon really is made of green cheese,' I'm not gonna swear to that just because this man told me,' but then we would take an oath that he tells me that he flew up in a blue balloon? That the balloon was blue? We're gonna, we're gonna say, 'No, no, that's fine, I'll swear to that, but I won't swear that the moon is green.'" Right? It's the same man who's telling us both of the things. If the man's crazy for saying that the moon is made of green cheese, then he's crazy for telling us that the balloon was blue. You can't accept part of the testimony. If the reliability of the testimony depends upon the reliability of the witness, and you're saying that the witness is not reliable when he tells us about the stigmata, then he's not reliable about any of it. But you do find him reliable in the first part, so find him reliable in the second part. That's the argument Chesterton is making here. Okay, let's pause there. We'll kind of take a look at the back end of chapter nine, and we'll finish chapter 10 for next time. Oh, yes. In Cassia, there is a miracle, this is crazy. You go to Europe, and you go see Saint Rita of Cassia in the basilica they built for her, right? And she's, you know, in a glass case in the side chapel, right? It's clearly the point of the pilgrimage. And also, in the basement, there's a Eucharistic miracle. If you go downstairs, there's a Eucharistic miracle down there, too. A priest had gone to visit a dying person, and he took a host with him, and he just pulled out his brevity and stuck the host in the pages and folded it and put it in his pocket. Right? Didn't like treat the host with the respect it deserves. When he got there, the host had bled into the pages of the brevity. And so he went and found the local saintly priest and said, "Help me, please." And the priest took the page, tore the pages right out of the brevity. Poor man, he couldn't pray the brevity anymore. Had to go get those pages replaced, and so the pages are still there on display. And you can see, it's faded, but you can see the image of a face, like a coin. The host, the host has bled, and the image of a face is on the host. Yeah, marvelous. 1400s, I think. I'm not sure exactly when. Another one in Orvieto, where the original Corpus Christi miracle happened. A priest was saying Mass, had doubts about the consecration, and the host started to bleed onto the corporal. The corporal is kept, right? The corporal has the marks of the blood on it. And in, I was actually the, I went there for Corpus Christi one year, when they carry this relic in procession, and I got to be the cross bearer for the procession. That was cool. That was, and they told me, "When you get tired, you can hand the cross off to somebody else." I'm like, "I will not get tired." And then, finally, in Siena, they have, the Franciscan Church there has a Eucharistic miracle of preservation. A suborium was stolen from a church once, and the thieves just wanted the gold, so they deposited the hosts in a pore box two days later. The whole town was praying for the recovery of the hosts, right? And the hosts were found in a pore box two days later. And so they had a big procession and festival, and they put these hosts in a monstrance, and they noticed that it smelled like fresh bread, so they didn't consume them. Right? And they're still there today. 300 hosts, the bishop, back in like 1920, had an experiment done, where he took 10 of the hosts out of the monstrance. It's a clear, it's a glass suborium, basically. He had 10 of the hosts taken out of that, and he had 10 new hosts made by the nuns. And he put them both in sealed tin containers, and put them on a shelf for 10 years, and opened them up 10 years later, and the unconsecrated hosts were dust. They were just disintegrated. Right? And the miracle hosts smelled like fresh bread still. Yeah, so that was where I made my holy hour, when I was in Siena, is in the chapel of the miracle. Yeah, amazing, amazing.
There was a Eucharistic miracle a couple months ago reported in Indiana.
Is that right? I didn't hear that. Yeah. Oh, I don't know. I don't know. No, I don't know about that. These do get reported from time to time, and they're relatively common in the last 100 years. They happen, there was a flurry of them that happened in the Middle Ages, when there was this basically Gnostic heresy cropping up again, as it does from time to time, that denies the goodness of nature and therefore denies the sacraments, which are instrumental causes, you know, physical causes of grace. So therefore denies the goodness of the Holy Eucharist. And that's when a lot of these miracles flouried, right? And I think that's why we're getting them again today, because the world does not believe.
What is the procession from the Church when something like this happens for them to authenticate it?
So the miracles very often are miracles of an appearance of blood. And the Church investigates is this blood. Sometimes it happens with some frequency, just because there's a relatively common bread mold. So if a host, this happens, the pattern that seems to happen with some frequency is a host is dropped, and it's put in a little dish to disintegrate, so that it can be disposed correctly, and they will find it with blood. Right? But there is a relatively common bread mold that turns red. Right? So they, so people will, "Oh, goodness." Right? And then they go investigate, and it turns out that it's just mold. Right? But if they find that it is actually blood, right, then, you know, they look for, is there any other possible explanation for that? If not, then it seems to be a Eucharistic miracle. It's important to note that the Church's faith is not on the miracles, right, any of them. The Church's faith is on one miracle, which is the resurrection of Christ. These other miracles are there, it seems, for God to bolster our faith, who are weak in these later ages. Right? We are not required to believe any of them. All they're there for, not all they're there for, it's, you know, the goodness of God is giving them to us, so how can you limit that? But they're there to bolster us, but they're not necessary to us in any way. So, yeah, we're not required to believe any of them. That's what's called, the Church distinguishes between public revelation and private revelation. Public revelation is what Jesus gave to his apostles, recorded in the scriptures, and handed down through sacred tradition. Private revelation is any of those acts that God continues to do through his providence down to the present day, which are helpful to us, but not of the deposit of the faith.
So Father, does the Church treat apparitions in the same manner?
That's right, that's right. So for example, you're not required to believe that Mary appeared at Fatima. I think most of us do, but the Church does not require us to believe that. She hasn't made it a matter of dogma. It's, and in fact, it couldn't be a matter of dogma. She will never do that, because it's not part of the public deposit of the faith. Now, it could possibly become declared as a dogma that God does these things in history. And the Church, you know, says that there's no reason to suspect that this wasn't God doing that. Right? "We've investigated it, and there's no reason to suspect that it wasn't God doing that. We just don't require you to believe that." Right? I would say a certain resistance to that belief would be anti-Christian. Right? A "I will not believe that" would be anti-Christian, but you're not required to believe it, if that distinction makes sense.
Aren't there instances, though, where the Church has declared that something's worthy of belief?
That's right.
There's others that they, like, isn't Medjugorje not authenticated?
It hasn't been authenticated because it's not finished yet. We don't, like, you can't judge something that is still ongoing. Is, as I understand it, the reason the Church has not ruled on those, you know, alleged apparitions. Because, you know, maybe everything that has been said so far seems reasonable and legitimate, and then tomorrow she comes and says something that is clearly from the devil. Right? Okay, we don't want to authenticate it until she's done talking. That's the idea with something like Medjugorje. Yeah.
You mentioned Saint Rita of Cassia. Wasn't she gifted with an entry from one thorn of the crown of?
That's right, yeah. She heard a Franciscan preacher preaching about Francis's stigmata. She went back to her cell and asked the cross, she talked to the cross and said, "I want that too, but give me some things that can be hidden, so that I don't draw attention to myself." So she got a thorn underneath her religious veil. The other nuns did know about it, but it wasn't, you know, widely known, at least at first.
Father, wasn't her skull the one you described as the size of a can?
No, that's Saint Agnes. Saint Agnes, yeah. It's tiny little skull in Rome. She was 12 years old. Yeah, but I guess, yeah. Yeah, the nurse is telling us about. I don't know. It just, in the reliquary, it seems very small. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. Okay, let's wrap up there, let people go off there, ready to go. I'm happy to keep talking, of course. "Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen." Okay, thanks, friends. See you next week.